Please bow your head. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to meet here tonight. We ask that you be with those who are sick and needy during this time, including Mayor Flowers and Commissioner Joe Johnson. We ask that you be with their families and be with Joe as he recovers from his illness. We thank you for allowing us to have a safe New Year and happy holidays. And we ask that you be with our citizens as we go through the winter weather this weekend. We hope that you keep everyone safe. And Lord, we ask you to be with us as we do the town's business tonight. In your name we pray, amen. All right, next up on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and amend item seven C.
Okay. All right, motion's been made to and properly seconded to approve the amended agenda, which adds item C, seven C.
Correct.
All right, is there any more discussion before we go to vote?
Don't we have a seven C?
It was not on the original.
Oh, sorry.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, agenda passes. All right, next up, we have public hearings. We have two tonight. First up is item A, to close a portion of Marsh Street. I'll declare the public hearing open as of 7:02 and turn it over to staff for report.
Yes, sir, Mayor Protim Brain. Marsh Street was initially identified on the plaque in 1913. It has remained unpaved and unimproved. Mr. Montiel requested the town abandon the right of way in 2023. He has surveyed the area at his own expense. The following are the basic steps provided by the North Carolina General Statute 168-299 for towns to use in closing their public streets and alley. They must have a petition or request from a citizen for a street closure. They must adopt the resolution with intent to close. They must publish the resolution of intent to close and notification to adjoining property owners. And then, following that, they should have a public hearing after four weeks of advertising and posted notice on at least two places on a street to be closed. That is where we are now. Following the public hearing, if the board so chooses, they may pass a resolution ordering the street closed. And then, the last step is to record at the register of deeds, the resolution ordering the street closed along with the plaque.
All right, thank you, Mr. Page. Next up is comments from the public. Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
I just need to have a patient from Mr. Rizzo, who wanted to speak during citizens' times. No one signed up for it.
Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak? Okay, hearing done, I declare the hearing closed as of 7:03. All right, next up is item B, close the northern portion of the 100 block of South College Street. And I'll declare the public hearing open as of 7:03 and turn it over to staff for report.
Yes, sir, Mayor Protim Brain. This one is very similar, except that it's a result of an NC DOT project that removed the existing connection from South College Street to Main Street. And as such, the town paid for the survey and the circumstance. As you see, the notice was posted and the effective closure happened months ago when NC DOT grasped the area, built the curb out, and posted the signs. It actually already said road closed ahead. NC DOT put the signs up on our portion of South College Street to notify the general public that there's no longer a through traffic space at that location.
All right, thank you. Next up is comments from the public. Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for this item?
No one signed up.
All right, is there anybody in the room that would like to speak? All right, I'll declare the hearing closed at 7:04. All right, next up, we have citizens' comments. Madam Deputy Clerk, does somebody sign up?
We do have one, Mason Rizzo from 204 East Franklin Street.
Councilor and administration, it's a pleasure to speak before you tonight. As a member of the residents who represent the downtown core neighborhoods, it's with immense gratitude that I deliver a brief declaration of appreciation for your collective hard work and steadfastness. We are especially grateful for the board's solidarity to reduce town speed limits on town streets. And we are honored and privileged for the opportunity to work with Youngsville's first responders to make our town safer for everyone, everywhere. While we have more work left to do, my neighbors and I are excited to meet collective goals with you to impact real and lasting change for the sake of our town, for those who have called Youngsville home, and for those who will call Youngsville home after we are gone. As a personal aside, as a personal aside, I hope none of you spend too much time with the social media echo chamber. That is in no way a representation of the ethos of the residents of this town. Ours is a village, a community of decent people pursuing life, liberty, and happiness, and it does not live online. It lives on College Street and Franklin Street and in Sharon's and Burn Barrel and in the neighborhoods all around our town. The village is our best arena for practicing productive disagreement and compromise. Democracy by another name, and it is an honor to participate in that democracy with you all. Lastly, my neighbors and I want to express our unconditional appreciation for the good people who manage this town. The leadership, bravery, and perhaps iron-hard stubbornness to fight for the betterment of Youngsville and its citizens deserves the highest respect. The efforts of our town manager and the staff who contribute to support and execute the collective vision are second to none. Thank you all, and may 2025 bring courage, peace, and by the grace of the good Lord, some bypass funding, some bypass funding. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. All right, do we have anyone else sign up to speak?
No one else.
Okay, is there anybody else in attendance who would like to speak? All right, thanks. Next up, we have consent agenda, so entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. Any discussion before we vote? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Item passes. All right, next up is old business, item A, resolution to close a portion of Marsh Street. And the action requested here is to adopt the resolution. Do I have a motion to proceed?
Motion to adopt resolution.
Second.
Motion's been made, properly seconded. Any discussion before we go to vote? All right, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, next up, we have item six B, resolution to close the northern portion of the 100 block of South College Street. The action requested here is to adopt the resolution. Do I have a motion?
Motion to.
Motion been made and properly seconded. Any discussion before we go to vote? All right, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, next up, we have new business, seven A. So first up, we have a letter of support for bypass federal race planning grant. The action requested here is to approve letter.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion's been made. Properly seconded, do we have any discussion?
Report of the board is curious, but it was in your packet, so I know you guys read it. It's up to you whether you'd like me to go with it or not.
If you can, just give us a summary for everyone in the room to.
Yeah, so this is a race planning grant that the board authorized myself and Assistant Town Manager Dorfer to sign the contract proceeding with it during the December meeting. And we did so, this is a letter of support that will be submitted to the federal government. It is for raised planning funds, which means there's no local match. We have had to pay for the person to put the grant application together, but I came across a couple of interesting facts today. I can share those now or at a subsequent meeting if you'd like. Those are the ones that I texted you guys earlier about.
Go ahead.
Okay. The truck traffic in downtown Franklinton is two to three percent of their main street's traffic. In Wake Forest, it's one percent. In, I'm trying to pull up the exact numbers so I don't make a mistake. In Springs, it is three percent. In Butler, Lewisburg, and Carboro, it's less than one percent. In Youngsville, the downtown truck traffic, our main street, is eight percent of the truck traffic. So there is a big difference about our street from the others. It is also the least safe street within the North Carolina DOT network. Now, it's in the one percent of the least, 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 it's in the one percent of the least safe streets within their network. So there may be a less safe street in the state, but it is number, it is in the, in the top.
Top.
Whatever it is, yes, it's in the top percent out. Thank you. Both for safety and for the highest crash density. And so, our raised grant, that our application that we're putting together to the federal government to try and help us build a portion of the, design a portion of the bypass, is where those numbers are coming from. That formal grant application will come before you guys in February, but those are the snippets that I picked up today from the report and thought the board might be interested in.
All right, thank you, Mr. Page. Does anybody have any further discussion before we move to vote? All right, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, next up, we have item seven B, determine date for potential budget workshop. So the action requested here is to choose a date and direct staff. So I don't know if you had any in mind that you want us to look at?
I have a recommendation that we do it in March. And because everybody has a tendency to travel at some point in time, I recommend that we either try to do it the day of or the day after the board meeting, which would be March 13th or 14th.
Fourteenth works. Better for me. Fourteenth works.
On the fourteenth is right before the fifteenth. It's just a 5K.
So you can get in here and you can carload it forward.
That's right. The fourteenth is fine, I just have a Sesquicentennial meeting on my calendar.
So we could have it start at 11:00 AM on the fourteenth?
That works. Remains that deal with you, Larry?
I have no idea.
What's the anticipated length of the meeting?
The Youngsville Board tends to move through material very quickly. There will be an update to the CIP, but it's a revision rather than a brand-new one. So I don't think it will take more than a couple of hours. I think it will be done by one. It could be that it goes longer than that based on how many questions the board has, but I wouldn't, it shouldn't be that much longer.
You think we could get some turkey rubens?
Absolutely.
So I mean, just asking.
All right, so the action requested here is to choose a date and direct staff, so I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to set the date for March 14th at 11:00 AM.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded. Any discussion before we move to vote? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, next up, we have item seven C, which is the amended item that we added, resolution requesting Youngsville control Main Street. So the action requested here is adopt resolution, but I'll turn it over to staff to brief us before we move forward.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Protim. The town of Youngsville has obviously been searching for methods to remove heavy truck traffic from Main Street. One of the potential options would be for the North Carolina General Assembly to pass a local bill which reverted ownership of Main Street to Youngsville. This resolution requests that that take place, which would then permit the town to regulate the roadway in a similar manner to our other town-owned streets.
Mr. Page, all right, I will entertain a motion to.
Wait, this, I'm going to fast, real fast, just sort of question. What is the timeframe for this to take place? How long does it take to get through the General Assembly? And then, after that, I know that you talked a little bit about fiscal impact. What other impacts will it have?
Yes. The, so, the timeframe for the General Assembly would be a better one for Senator Barnes or Representative Winslow. Generally speaking, from my understanding, local bills move quickly at the beginning of the session and then slow down towards the end as they get, as the General Assembly gets weighted down with other items that come before them. For the most part, it appears that local bills have less debate because they impact much, much more locally than, you know, the 11 million people that live in the state. In terms of other impacts, there would be numerous other impacts. The cost to maintain Main Street is more than every other street we have. The only ones that are even remotely similar is something like Wheaton, where we have an industrial park that does have heavy truck traffic on it. There will be trucks here even if we are able to regulate it. Some of our businesses here have trucks that routinely deliver items to them and should continue to do so. Sharon's is an example, the Horsehead Meat Truck goes there relatively frequently. And there are other local business trucks that would still be able to use it. However, we could regulate it so that through trucks, and the resolution is written so that we could control that any truck that wasn't coming within five miles of Youngsville's city wouldn't be able to use that Main Street. So if somebody's going from Virginia to Zebulon, they can take a different route. They don't need to come through here, which would reduce the damage that's done to the road. Sixty-nine percent of the traffic that drives down Main Street is not local traffic. It didn't tease out whether it's sixty-nine percent of the eight percent of trucks or not. I don't have that number, but anecdotally, it doesn't seem like the majority of the heavy truck traffic is local truck traffic when they're driving through. And so, it would not require the level of expense and maintenance that it has now. That would go down, but it would still be our most expensive street. However, the bridge sidewalks are still things that we maintain and that we pay for. And so, regardless of whether it's our street or not, the sidewalks are things that we have to maintain. Many of the curb cuts are pieces that we have to maintain. So really, the primary difference is who's paying for the striping on the road and who's paying for the asphalt when there's issues with the asphalt on it. And the pound bill money, in theory, covers repaving. I'm going to bring before you guys a budget request to repay about $300,000 for the streets again next year, and our pound bill money this year was $94,000. So we're losing about three dollars for every dollar, well, two dollars for every dollar we bring in pound bill money. So it will be more expensive for us to maintain it. However, we could close it whenever we wanted. For a downtown festival like Summer Fest or something like that, it wouldn't have to be something that we have to get permission from the state of North Carolina to close. It's your street to do it as you want. And then, you could regulate whether the street, through traffic or not on it. You can design it how you want. You could change the lane widths and add parking, it becomes yours.
And I mean, just to jump onto that, the town would be able to regulate it. There are still some limits on that, but there's also, as far as the town's responsibility to maintain, you know, you have that responsibility to maintain the sidewalks and pedestrian aspects of it. With the responsibility to maintain and keep up the roads comes like liability for any accidents that would happen if somebody claimed that the town's failure to maintain the road caused the accident. You know, we don't, that liability is currently with NC DOT. People still could get, you know, mixed up and sue the town instead. Under the current regime, we don't see those lawsuits, so, you know, knock wood. But, so, there is that potential additional exposure, but I think based on the trend of what we've seen, where we haven't seen those lawsuits, it's not a very large amount. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It's a serious responsibility to maintain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff? Right, all right, so the action requested here is to adopt resolution. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
No.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded. Any more discussion before we move to vote? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, now we're on to reports and other businesses. Mayor Flower regrets that he could not be here tonight. He had a death in the family, but he's attending to. He did leave his report with me, so I'm going to read through it and try not to say the Iowa when it's Fonzie. But anyway, said, "I hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year. I'm excited about what 2025 has in store for us as we continue to move Youngsville forward. The Franklin County Board of Commissioners unanimously approved the development agreement for Rolling Meadows. This is a very important, this is very important for the town as a developer. We'll build a third of our bypass and install additional critical infrastructure for us. I want to thank the commissioners, Franklin County Commissioners, for approving this first time-ever agreement, as it will be impactful to Youngsville for many years to come. Nathan, Will, and I, Fonzie, had a great meeting with Representative Winslow earlier this week to discuss traffic, safety, development, and water. He left with several items to work on, and we look forward to hearing what he's able to address on our behalf at the state level. He is a true partner, and his commitment to assisting us is unparalleled and unwavering. Sesquicentennial meeting is tomorrow at 10:00 AM. We're getting closer to kickoff, and I'm getting excited. Tickets are already on sale for Casino Night on March 1st. Don't miss out on a great night of fun. January 21st is the Franklin County Chamber Awards banquet from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Pine Hill Pavilion off Morse Pond in Youngsville. I'm looking forward to attending." And that's the end of his reports. For my report, I'll just reiterate what Mayor Flowers said about the Franklin County Board approving the Rolling Meadows agreement. We, as you all know, we've been fighting as hard as we can to get done whatever we can to make this bypass happen. And water's been one of the main issues that's been in the way, and we've been working with the county commissioners and specifically Logan Davis, as he's now our representative for our district. He's been great so far, and this is an example of that. So we're very excited, very thankful, and we look forward to reaping the benefits of that agreement. Other than that, there was no Campo meeting in December. Next one is next Wednesday. And I had adult basketball kicked off this week. We had our first game last night, and Mayor Flowers and I are reminded of how old we are. We were planning to ride the bench most of the year, but we had to play more than we expected, so we're moving around a little slow today. So, all right, I'll pass it down to Commissioner Redd.
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Pershing.
Chamber meeting was canceled, well, not canceled, but they don't want a meeting because it's Thursday in January, so it'd been like the right around New Year's, so no meetings, so not a lot.
Commissioner Wiggins?
I have nothing.
All right, I will pass it over to our town authorities, Ms. Barbara Jones.
That's good.
Glad to have you back.
During that comment, I just wanted to say thank you all for. And thank you to Nathan for bringing me back in the loop on important stuff. It sounds like the town has a lot going on this month and future months. Glad to be back.
All right, next up, staff reports. Hand over to Mr. Page.
I want to humbly apologize for anyone who's had trouble getting in touch with town staff over the last week. The internet has been intermittent, and it's one of those things where it's down every morning when we come in, we call, they say they're going to be here by one. Sometimes they show up on time, sometimes not. I recognize that we have some employees here, some folks who work here who are employees of Brightspeed, but Brightspeed appears to be the only alternative provider other than Starlink. And Starlink is still a little weird if you're doing unlimited data on it. So I anticipate us signing a contract with Brightspeed, and we'll make sure that the members who work with Brightspeed are not involved at all with any of those negotiations, contracts, or discussions. It'll be something that handle with members who do not look for those companies. But I just wanted to make the public aware of that. It has been very frustrating dealing with Spectrum for the last few months, and we very much tried to give it a go, but it ain't. So we're going to try something different. And it's really probably been twenty hours out of the last four days that the internet's been out at town hall, during staff hours. That has been very troubling for us and for people that are trying to reach us. And then, lastly, the inclement weather looks weird. We're going to cancel the sporting events that are happening Friday night and Saturday, and I believe they may already have been canceled for Sunday as well. So I just wanted to give people a heads up about that and hope that everybody has a sick weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Any other staff have reports?
Sure.
Sergeant Sheeter?
So in respect to the ongoing traffic issues that we're having downtown, and I know a focus of that has been pedestrian safety at the center forefront of our minds as well. I just wanted to let everyone know that we have a concerted enforcement efforts coming up on January 15th and February 12th, where I should have some additional personnel coming in to do a crosswalk enforcement action. Certainly, that doesn't prevent any of our officers from working independently and going out there and trying to enforce those crosswalks on their own. Please understand that there's some barriers to that for a single officer observing those types of interactions, and then at peak travel times, it's very difficult to get up there and turn around and do things they need to do to capture violators. So we thought it would be best and more effective just to have that concerted effort. I'll be participating myself, as well as the captains, kind of marking those individuals that don't respect the crosswalks and officers would be stopping them. We'll have a strict enforcement action, I assure you, for anyone that violates that. Also wanted to, does anyone have any questions about that? And then, I also wanted to comment that Chief Christmas has been nice enough to invite us to participate in an award ceremony with the fire department. So this year, we'll have a joint PD and fire department award ceremony on March 8th at 5:30. It's wanting to begin, I'm here Flowers as one of our guest speakers for the ceremony, and I'd like to invite anyone that would like to come out and attend, or if you would like to have a position or a block of time to speak, then we'll welcome them to come out. So that's on March 8th, and again, beginning at 5:30.
Where's that at again?
Victoria, at Victoria.
Victoria. On the local calendar.
I think that's great, you guys can do that together.
Absolutely.
I love that.
Yeah, we're happy to do it. Everyone's excited about it, so.
No, we just need like, all right. Thank you, Jesus. Give us a leg with the ballgame or something.
All right, any other staff?
Yes. As deputy tax collector, I wanted to let the board know that as of January 6th, the town has a new online tax bill lookup and payment system. And individuals can go to www.youngsvillenc.gov/tax or to our website to, again, look up taxes, pay taxes, see your payments and everything from the web.
All right, thank you, Deputy Clerk. Anybody else? All right. Next up, we have closed session, and we do need to go into closed session tonight for items A, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 Attorney Client Privilege. And then, item B, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6 Personnel. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go to closed session.
Motion made and properly seconded and staffed before vote. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right, we are now in closed session. Do that right.
Work the time.
Oh, yeah, in the closed section at 7:20. Session. We went into closed session and exited closed session at 9:16 PM. And so now, we are in open session, and the board did not take action. And the board did not take action in a closed session, and we have no further business on the agenda. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion been made and properly seconded. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And nine seventeen?
At nine seventeen.
Thank you.
Yeah.